That's a stupid question because I said you and I listened, I didn't get in on all of it. But I was here when the, when the whole started and, you know, it's, it's not who I was even on the side. You were wrong. And that's what we did.
All right.
When, when you call the person who was extra mental and getting you on these and you can call them names and says, I can't be here, they're passing the buck. That's where I got the problem.
I'm scared I need to see.
Sure.
How you doing, buddy?
Hi, Dan, how are you?
That email conversation is precisely what we shouldn't be doing, which is sending those individually.
Oh.
Personally, if we're asking.
Been wondering where you were at. We hadn't seen you the last couple of times.
And I didn't even see, because I don't normally look who's on them. I thought it was to us. That wasn't intended.
Oh, well, yeah, I was gonna say.
Is that what you're talking about, that one from tonight?
I didn't want to come out to the end of so bold and ask you, but you know.
They probably should have sent it individually.
We, I have an obligation, so, but yeah, it's, it was, uh.
I don't know that there was an.
I had to be in Lansing last week, came home last, yesterday afternoon. That was a real treat.
That, at least that's how I took it, is, hey, these are my questions and I'm.
From the time I left this side of Kalamazoo to getting home.
What's up there?
I drove with my four-way flasher on, but you couldn't see. Oh, it was nasty. And I got off Ninety Four. I said, you know what? I'm getting off Ninety Four. Because I couldn't see in front of me. And I, you know, I could see big trucks coming up behind me.
Maybe it is the same one.
So I cut off on, I don't remember where. Started coming to back roads.
Dude, I like.
It took me a lot longer to get home, but, uh.
We just did both, we do both.
Sam?
Yeah. Because we balance between them.
I don't remember last time I was Sam's.
So.
It's crazy. My wife does the same thing.
Especially with gas.
Yeah, I can't avoid it.
Which we do when we're there, because it's so much cheaper.
And then get snow and stuff again.
I beat three fifty last week, Friday.
But everything's gone alright.
I put premium here because of the older vehicles. I think they run better. It's four dollars across the street for that. Not surprised those guys are here tonight.
Yeah. Did you guys read Alan's email before we?
Yeah, of course.
He sent an email?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Like, maybe, yeah, if, uh, you were, you were.
Obsolete.
About chastising us for now taking down another volunteer, a significant volunteer.
He can show up and plead his case if he wants.
He could. That would be the, that would be the manly thing to do, right?
He's a model because she's Jewish on there.
Um, were you gonna let me do that, if you don't mind?
Why is that, Larry? That's very strange. I don't understand.
Oh, I've got a story behind it, dude, on his first name.
I was just kidding. I used.
Oh, yeah, oh, uh.
I don't know.
A good story.
Yeah, that's this one.
Oh, yeah.
These are the ones, these are the ones that bring the details.
Yeah, I don't, but they're not, because they're landing everything on site.
Mike?
They're chopping everything up and leaving it there. The RJ recycling?
So they just did the simplicity building in Nile. I'm pretty sure that's.
Good evening.
But, but, so the reason I think they're weird, though, is, so they're at forty, Paines is at forty-four, five, but they're leaving all that material on site. And Paines is taking away and bringing back sand. That's a big difference.
What about the last one? Do you give more additional details beyond? I know he's gonna present tonight, but RJ, RJ recycling.
That's what I was, I was telling him. They're, they're leaving everything on site. They're saying they're grinding everything up, but they're leaving.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, we didn't want that.
Yeah, no, because they.
We like.
You're talking about the, uh.
For the, uh, rebel.
Oh, my God.
This thing is.
And that was our, that was one of the things.
No, no, he's talking about the DPW buildings.
Oh, okay.
But they were doing that for all of their, all of the boats. They said that, that they were gonna grind up concrete and, and leave it on site.
So there was only one, Paines, that was gonna bring back the sand at no additional cost.
No, but, no, and actually, Payne said they would bring it back, but they're not, but they have the charges for the sand.
Okay, right. Oh, for both, but not transportation.
But, but the John Withrow, they said they would bring back sand, plant grass seed at the other locations and get rid of everything.
What's in their comment about?
Except the DPW, they were, because there's gonna be construction there, they weren't going to plant grass.
Good to be seen. How are you doing?
Oh, yeah, but that's a massive loss.
So, I mean, I'm kinda leaning towards them, only because.
Thank you.
I missed that. I thought.
The RJ recycling I saw was.
Yeah, hold on. Wasn't there something about certifications on the other one, though?
I think RJ, I think RJ was saying, yeah, if there's any kind of environmental cleanup, that's not included in our two hundred thousand dollar cost or.
Well, wasn't there something about, like certifications of working next to, like, they're the ones that are certified to work next to railroad and somebody else put a comment in.
I don't know. Neither I saw it.
How you doing?
Yeah.
Good.
Now I gotta look at it. Yeah, that one was just monstrous, though.
The two hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's shocking.
Was it Oatesville?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was only for.
I know.
It was actually two seventy-five to do the feed mill and the silos.
Right.
Crazy.
Crazy.
If you start getting any bigger, we're gonna need to bind her.
I know, right? I mean, it's kinda nice that she has these.
No, well.
Okay, it was Withrow that had the DEQ stuff.
I felt that all the way over here, Heather.
Here's this bigger, Pat, Patrick, if you wanna see it.
Hey, Heather.
Mike, Mike is gonna be here.
Demo structure is shown in terms of the foundations of footwork.
We're gonna set him right there.
Dust controller. I like this one. That was what you and I talked about.
So, so we have discussion. We're gonna do that later after the public hearings are over, when we.
It's seven o'clock.
Guys, ready?
Yep. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission for Monday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is seven o'clock. Happy Valentine's Day. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Dennison?
Here.
Whedon?
Yep, here.
Downey? Money?
Present.
Swem?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, open, uh, our first public hearing for the evening.
And I would like to read a statement for the purpose of the public hearing. Public hearing on requested removal of Dan Bianski from city boards. A public hearing will be held to accept comments and input related to an item on tonight's agenda under new business whereby the city commission shall consider the request of Mayor Dennison and Commissioner Money to have Dan Bianski removed from all city boards, including the Buchanan Area Recreation Board, or BARB, for alleged misfeasance, namely, repeated disruptive behavior during a January twelfth, twenty twenty-two BARB meeting, which negatively impacted the city's ability to conduct its business during said meeting.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? To open the public hearing?
This is money. I would move to open the public hearings on the requested removal of Dan Bianski from the city board.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, um, at this time, I'd, um, like to invite anyone wishing to speak in favor of the removal of Mr. Bianski from the, um, city boards to please make their way to the podium and state their name for the minutes. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Did we receive any written comments?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak, uh, in opposition of Mr. Bianski's removal? Did we get any written correspondence in opposition?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I did receive some emails from Mr. Bianski, which we can add to the record if he so desires. I'll correspond with him and see if that was his intention of those emails.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No one's speaking in favor, no one's speaking against. I would take a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, let's move on to, uh, public hearing number two. Uh, Mr. Murphy.
Mayor Commissioners, Members of Public, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director, um, as I've kinda kept you guys up to date over the last several weeks, the city, my team, the city of Buchanan, uh, has, have been engaged with Cornerstone and, uh, more specifically, um, Zach Vaughn, who's here tonight, uh, to develop, um, proposals for a establishing, uh, obsolete property rehab districts in the city of Buchanan for the purposes of two catalytic redevelopment projects. Uh, so we've been working, uh, with Cornerstone and with the property owners themselves, um, on two projects that, um, in the redevelopment world can only be described as pretty awesome, uh, taking, uh, buildings that have been vacant for many years, um, and in one case, uh, breathing life back into that building as a mixed-use, uh, anchor downtown. And in the other case, a building that is an old school that, uh, will come back online as a, a maker space community, uh, development and, um, and, uh, community venue. Uh, so these projects are brought to you by visionaries, uh, entrepreneurs that see opportunity in Buchanan. Um, and so, uh, they are here this evening. Um, on the public hearing side, uh, we are required to hold a public hearing for the establishment of an Oprah district. And I'll just read the citation. Um, the Oprah or Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, uh, provides property tax exemptions for commercial and commercial, uh, commercial housing opportunities that are rehabilitated and meet the requirements of the act. Properties must meet eligibility requirements, including a statement of obsolescence by the local assessor. The property must be located in an established obsolete property rehabilitation district. Exemptions are approved for a term of one to twelve years as determined, determined by the local unit of government. Uh, the property taxes for the rehab property are based on the previous years prior to rehabilitation taxable value. That taxable value is frozen for the duration of the exemption. Additionally, the state treasurer may approve reductions of half of the school operating and, and state education taxes for a period of not to exceed six years for twenty-five applications annually. Uh, applications are filed, reviewed by you, the local unit of government, uh, but then are subject to review at the state level by the property services division. The state tax commission is ultimately responsible for the final approval and issuance of the Oprah certificate. So, uh, I think I described tonight, this is the first step, creation of the district itself in each, each case, of the hometown video building. Um, at one oh one, one oh three days would create, be, create a district. And secondly, um, Old Start School, five oh two Claremont would be a separate district. You, uh, establish that, that district with the approval of the resolution in front of you this evening. And additionally, you prepared the, uh, certificate of obsolescence, uh, statement by the, uh, our city assessor. So with that, I just want to explain the background of, uh, the tool we're using to get these properties developed and get millions of dollars invested in these properties, uh, so that ultimately they will go back on the tax rolls full boat. But, uh, uh, but giving the investor the, uh, incentive to, uh, have that tax abatement, uh, for the duration of the term. There'll be a second term, uh, that we come back to with the actual numbers and the request, uh, of the time allotments for each project. And that will be kinda step two, uh, once the applications are prepared and submitted for your approval. That'll be step two in the process.
Thank you. Uh, I'd take a motion to, uh, open the public hearing.
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor of establishing an Oprah for Roland Property Group to please make their way forward and state their name for the minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Hello, everyone. Uh, Michael Roland, four seven nine three, Tulip Tree Lane. Uh, my wife and I are the owners of the, what is known as the Hometown Video Building. Uh, most people in this room know myself from running the community foundation here in town and my wife from Fermwood Botanical Gardens. What a lot of folks don't know is that for, since two thousand eight, we've ran Roland Property Group, a successful property development, um, company that we've done over a dozen residential and commercial properties. And in addition to that, I have thirteen years of experience doing commercial finance projects just like this. When we looked at investing in this community, um, it's something that we looked at, at a global picture. We raised two children in this community. Um, I was born and raised here myself, and we wanna make sure that the downtown features that we had when I was growing up are something that we can recreate. The future of Buchanan, um, is at a tipping point. We can decide to invest in our future, invest in retail businesses that bring foot traffic, invest in, um, the type of future we want for not only us, but our, our children. Um, and that's where we see this project. As property developers, I can tell you with utmost certainty, I've invested and we've invested in the past and in the future with projects that are significantly more profitable than what we're doing with this. I can attest that and prove through appraisals and a variety of other functions that we're putting more money into this building than what it will be worth post-construction. So our ask for the prop, for this discussion is that that is considered, um, as we go forward, um, with this tax abatement, that we also are sharing this risk with the city, that our family, not just our business, are invested in this community and are looking forward to, uh, creating a better future for everyone. So, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Zachary Vaughn. Uh, just as Rich mentioned, I am representing Cornerstone Alliance. I'm a project manager, uh, with that organization there. Um, and within the city of Benton Harbor, we also did a Oprah project, uh, in the city, or downtown. Um, and again, to the point of what Rich made and to what Mike said, uh, spoke to, um, again, when we see these investments and when we see these, uh, these projects come online, um, the benefit of what it provides to the community is huge. Um, the, one of the, uh, the projects in the city of Benton Harbor, which is located downtown, corner of Pipes Hill and Main Street, uh, they have a mixed-use property, uh, at that location, housing, uh, and commercial use at the, on the store, on the, uh, the main floor. Um, as big as housing is a need, uh, in this, uh, this time, um, that, that project, once it was completed, it took no time at all to, uh, see the, the, the benefits, uh, from what that, that Oprah, uh, tax exemption did for, uh, for that project. So, the, um, the incentive is, is huge to eliminate those blighted, blighted and, um, and functionally obsolescent, obsolescence, excuse me, um, properties, uh, which we have. We see a lot of those in the downtown area of Benton Harbor. Um, you know, we wanna see more of those projects, uh, take off and go online. So, uh, what Mike is doing here in Lane, uh, will be a huge benefit to the, uh, the community here and, um, uh, this is only one of the, the first steps to something huge that's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Did we receive any correspondence in favor?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing no one. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of establishing an Oprah for Roland Property Group? I would ask you to come forward and state your name for the minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Did we get any written correspondence in opposition?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to, uh, close this public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, public hearing number three. Uh, this public hearing is, uh, for the purpose, excuse me, for the purpose of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Claremont Stark LLC, five oh two Claremont Street, Buchanan. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to open this public hearing? I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, you wanna?
I just wanna kinda tee it up. Uh, this is, uh, using the same tool, the Oprah, um, establishing the Oprah district for purposes of tax abatement. In this case, it's for a Old Start, Stark School, which I believe last operated in two thousand eleven. Um, and, uh, Jen Tabor, who was here this evening, um, has acquired the building and has a vision for redevelopment of the building, um, in, in a mixed-use capacity. So, um, certainly, um, uh, find, using this tool to support, um, the investment is, uh, in the, in, with the goal that this community asset is back active contributing, contributing to the community again, so.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to open public hearing establishing obsolete property rehabilitation district for Clark, or for, sorry, Claremont Stark LLC, five oh two Claremont Street in Buchanan.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor of establishing an Oprah for Claremont Stark LLC? Please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes.
Jen Tabor, four one three East Front Street. Um, I didn't know I was speaking today, so I'm feeling a little red. Um, the plan with Stark is, I started looking for a place to have an office and it turned into much more than an office, but there are a lot of things that I felt, um, we had a same thing, opportunities that I had elsewhere and that I saw a need for here, for especially our students. Um, it can be young students and it, through adult students, but the, you know, our plan with this building is to, uh, make a community venue for small bands and acts to play at, also potentially have a space for, um, uh, recording studio, practice studios for bands, and then also a future music school where we can, um, train students. So kind of all the things that our business down the street is involved already in and just bringing all those things kind of to a home and involving the community in, um, ways that we do not currently reach the community, giving a lot of people outlets for things that they don't have an outlet for here. And, um, it seemed, once, uh, all, all the things started coming together, it seemed pretty simple because none of this is a stretch from what we're currently doing and our guitar strap manufacturing business and my background as a music education, um, instructor. So I think we can bring these things together in this building and activate it in, um, a way that would be beneficial for the community.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of establishing an Oprah for Claremont Stark?
Uh, once again, Michael Roland, four seven nine three, Tulip Tree Lane. Uh, I've known Jen for a long time since she came into this community. And we've talked in depth about her vision. And I think as a, as a city, we oftentimes look at how we can recruit business to, to our community and, and add more jobs. And we fail to look at the businesses we already have. Uh, Soldier is a worldwide company that provides jobs and resources for our community. I think in this case, we're also bringing a building that otherwise probably doesn't have a lot of options. Um, it's in a residential community. Um, there's not a lot of businesses that can go in it. This is something where we can blend community resources as well as, um, supporting a business that's local and supporting a blighted building. Um, so as, you know, a citizen, um, this isn't coming from Roland Property Group or Michigan Gateway Community Foundation. Um, I highly support her project and, and hope this is something that, as a community, we can come together on.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Monroe Lemay. I'm, uh, one eighteen Sherman Parkway. About seventeen years ago, I stood here doing exactly what she did with the Buchanan Art Center, and I was told I was absolutely crazy. So, I fought. I was told I was absolutely not right in what I was doing, but look at today. They are running, they are bringing in a lot of wonderful things for our children, for our community. And I think Jen has exactly the same kind of vision that we had for the art center, but I think she will probably do more. I say whatever she wants in this community, let her have it. She's accept, she's excellent at whatever she does. Um, as a senior center board member, I would love to have this in our community and in our neighborhood. Um, I just think this is gonna really help us bring our children into the right place that it needs to be brought. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Do we receive any written correspondence? Okay. Okay, at this time, I would ask anyone wishing to speak in opposition of establishing the Oprah for Claremont to please make your way to the podium. State your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Did we receive any correspondence in opposition?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, uh, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
I will support.
Thank you.
Make it pass.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, thank you. That concludes the public hearings. Uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, move on with the city, uh, commission meeting agenda and, and, uh, we do have some recognitions tonight. Uh, the first recognition we have tonight is for Buchanan City Fire Chief, Mike Adams. With thirty years of service and, um, Commissioner Money has asked to present, uh, Mr. Adams with his recognition. You may, absolutely.
Mike Adams, uh, just, and I know, uh, Commissioner Money has a lot of history with him, but I just wanted, uh, citizens here to understand that, uh, Mike Adams, Chief Adams, has, uh, dedicated thirty years of his life to the Buchanan City Fire Department. Uh, his dedication and commitment to that department is second to none. Um, we're just happy to have a well-trained professional like, uh, Mike is. His men respect him in the fire community. He is well-respected and it's just a, a great honor to work with him. And we, as a community and as a commission, should be very happy and very pleased to have an individual like Mike, Mike Adams, running our fire department. So, with that, go ahead.
First, before I present this plaque, uh, as Chief Gay has said, Mike and I had history on the fire department. I'm a twenty-seven year veteran of the fire department. And probably thirty years ago, Mike was in his first fire, uh, for the city of Buchanan. That fire happened to be right behind the fire station on, uh, Row Street. It was a house fire. Uh, the people who've been in Buchanan for quite a while, uh, would recognize the name, the name of the, uh, name of the residents that lived there. It was Raymond Paulman. Ray was a quadriplegic. We got to the scene and before we could even put water onto the fire, they was told by us that Raymond was still in the building. us that Raymond was still in the building. And so I asked, hey, I'm going in, I need somebody to come with me. Well, this was Mike's first fire. He stepped up to the plate because there was just a few of us there at that time. Stepped up to the plate, got on the porch and I says, you know what? If it bothers you to go in, say so now, but don't go in and leave me there because you will never aspire in this fire department. That will, this will be your last fire. And so, we can see that Mike took this old captain's advice and went into that fire and with that being said, we did pull Ray Baumann out of the fire. Fortunately, he was alive at the time, unfortunately, he died two weeks later. But that's my story, my recogla- recolition, recog- whatever. Of Mike. And with that being said, I want to present this to Mike for thirty years of service, presented to Mike Adams, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, in recognition of your outstanding achievements. Thank you for your hard work and dedication, Mayor Sean Dennison and City Manager Heather Grace.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Money, thank you, Mike, for your service. Um, at this time, um, I don't believe.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, uh, Dave Capron was unable to make it tonight, we'll have to reschedule, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just gonna save his recognition then.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. At this time, uh, we're gonna move on to public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium. Um, state your name for the minutes on agenda items only, please. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing no one, um. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Sean will make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. Okay, uh, schedule matters from the floor. Do you wanna speak to this or?
Um, I can't, did?
Or should we just throw it right to Jen? If you would. If you wanna just stay over there.
Back to the thing.
So, I'm making a proposal, Jen Tabor, four one three East Front Street. After touring as a band parent with the Buchanan Marching Band for the fall of twenty twenty-one, it became glaringly obvious that we have a deficit in a number of different facets with our marching band. And being a marching band parent of two students in the marching band, I realize how hard these kids work from doing parades to traveling to after-school practices, not getting homework done in time, et cetera, et cetera. And everywhere they go, they are one hundred percent representing our community. So, as a parent spy, when we went to the competitions, I just started taking a picture of what do we have and what do the other schools have? What do we have, what do the other schools have? And the more and more I took those pictures, I really started realizing that I think that there's ways that if our community saw the facts about, um, the status of equipment, uniforms, gear, things that other schools have that, um, that our community would rally together to help solve some of those problems. So back in October with my pictures, my photojournalism, I started this concept of March for Band and March for Band is two weeks away. So, March for Band, we are hoping to make a citywide fundraiser for the Buchanan Marching Band every March in perpetuity, where we can find ways for our communities to come together to raise funds so that we can supply, um, these much-needed worn-out items. Some of the, you know, our uniforms are the same ones that the band teacher's sister was wearing when she was in high school, so they've, they've outlived their wear and their time, their time to move on. All in all, we're trying to raise sixty-plus thousand dollars, um, through local businesses. We're having a band boosters parent meeting tomorrow and then we're gonna start working with the kids on Thursday of this week. And then we have a host of different events, um, that we're gonna do around the city and in local communities. So some of them will be dine-in shares, some of them are going to be just straight donations. We ask everybody who makes a donation, we have a packet of what you'll get for your donation. We've approached Gateway, um, with their granting season and we're really trying to just bring, um, awareness to this group that we all rely on. I mean, what would a halftime show be without the band? What would we do in a parade situation without the marching band? We rely on these kids in their positions to do what we need them to do and pretty thanklessly. So, I think that it would be a huge show for our community, for our school, for our kids who are in the band program to come together as a community, show our support and really help them feel like, oh, we are being noticed and, you know, things like that. Um, we have talked to the school district, I have talked to the school district, I have talked to the superintendent, I've met with the city on this and we're just looking for, trying to find ways that we can, um, you know, enhance and get to closer to that sixty thousand dollars that we, our, our, our target goal. Um, and, um, one of the things the city came up with, which is possibly a resolution to call month, what is it, the month, March?
Yeah, resolve to declare March as the March for Band Month into perpetuity.
And then, once we started doing March for Band, we found out that National Marching Band Day is March fourth for March fourth. So, it all kinda ties together and, um, you know, through our different sponsorship packets and, um, the activation of the parents, I think that we are going to do a great job. And if we don't, at least we're fifty perc- you know, we're further along than we are today, so this can be an ongoing, um, project and, um, yeah, piloting with Buchanan Marching Bands.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
It's a great idea for an oftentimes easily forgotten group of kids. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, this is Money, I, I would move to approve the resolution declaring March as March for Band Month, Buchanan.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. So just very quickly, I wanna read this resolution from the city Buchanan. Whereas the city Buchanan is supportive of the Buchanan Area School District Band Program and whereas the city Buchanan acknowledges that the band is a vital part of our community, contributing to the arts and cultures in our city through performance, excuse me, during performance, performances during games, concerts and parades, and whereas the city Buchanan hereby expresses thanks and gratitude to the members, past and present, of the Buchanan School Band for their generous contributions of time and talent shared with the community. And whereas the city Buchanan encourages its residents and business owners to give special recognition and support to our local school band each year during the month of March, which will hereafter officially be designated as March for Band Month within the city of Buchanan. So, congratulations.
Mark on your calendar, the first Thursday in March. Keep that date open for the American Legion meeting, that date.
Okay.
Plan to attend, please.
Do you have the students, like, get in the streets with, like, their suitcases open, like, for tips? Just fill in their town with music, love it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to reports by departments, committees and boards, starting with our community development director, Mr. Murphy.
Mayor, thank you, Rich Murphy. Uh, he have before you several marijuana renewals this evening. Um, our first item is from Red Bud Roots, um, who is renewing, um, several, uh, medical and adult use, uh, licenses. I have accepted their, um, applications, I find them all to be completely in good order and my recommendation is for approval. Additionally, I think you all know Alex, uh, principal from Red Bud Roots is in attendance tonight, if you guys have any questions.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
This is Money, I'd so move. Support.
Sorry, I was in my place. Thank you, can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. Um, can I, can I amend that motion to, to say, um, approve the permits listed in Agenda Items one through nine for Red Bud Roots pending receipt of satisfactory background checks? Are you still good with that motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, just one point.
Sure.
Yeah, I gave them a, an updated copy of the actual, uh, corrected spreadsheet.
So, there's two that aren't being renewed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Four forty-eight, uh, four forty-eight stack is not being renewed and then the two oh six, two oh eight, plastic roll is not being renewed. You got two more at four fifty-five, the older one being rolled. Eleven licenses total, two nine, two big nine, and the other two are missing.
Okay. Okay.
I'm, yeah, I'm clear on the inventory, uh, I went back with the, uh, the apparel lead as we match on the, uh, the cross. I know, it's, yeah, there's a lot of them.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We're good.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna, go ahead.
Um, I, you guys can, so any questions for me?
Um, I forgot where we were. Did we, did we do roll call on that?
We did, we did roll call. Your amendment was approved.
Your amendments are approved.
Okay.
Okay, so next item.
Yeah, next item.
Okay, so we have another, uh, company, Seven Engines here, Vinay Patel is here this evening, uh, again, renewing, uh, all of their, uh, licenses for two thousand twenty-two and I have reviewed, received all the applications, uh, find them to be in good order and, uh, my recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Question.
Yeah.
Uh, just out of curiosity, what is the, what is the plan on River Street? I'm just trying to gauge, uh, timeline, I think it's something that consistently has come up, uh, under many meetings. Uh, you know, when somebody occupies a license and it, and it's held for a considerable amount of time, that we need to, uh, we need to have discussions for future sake about how long licenses are held and we not see any progress, so I'm just curious. In particular to the grow aspect of this, we know that the retail is in functioning order, so.
So my name is Vinay Patel, I'm the president and CEO for the Seven Engine. So I took over as a president as of March ninth, twenty twenty-one and we met with the Rich Murphy last year summertime and we explained to him what our goals are for the company. So, we broke it down as a three phases for the company, to take it small chunk of pieces at a time.
Yep.
Uh, so number one was opening the provision center as medical marijuana, we did that and after talk. Second, we were in the process of getting our recreational license, which we did in August, mid-August, and we opened up a recreational, both doing well. So next phase is to working on the grow, who is, uh, grow in the extraction facility.
Right.
So we have AEP already installed, couple transformers already, we bring, we brought the power to the pad and we have our electrician working on finishing up the, bringing the power to the grow. So, in, in sense, we already started working on the grow facility as of December of twenty twenty-one and we'll be moving forward this spring.
Wonderful.
So you will see some moving forward, some project, uh, this summer and hoping to get it done, uh, end of this year.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the permits listed in Agenda Items one through six for Seven Engines, G2 Development pending receipt of satisfactory background checks.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
The third item is, um, just the last piece of the Cannavista Wellness, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, uh, application package, that you'll remember that we did go to the plan commission for special use approval, uh, for the operation of a designated consumption establishment that was approved. Now we're bringing the license, uh, to you, uh, for your approval, uh, by the city commission and I have accepted the, uh, application and, uh, find it to be complete and in good order and I know that, uh, Rick from Cannavista is here this evening as well. Happy to answer any questions for you guys. My recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, are there any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the designated consumption establishment license, application permit for Cannavista Wellness pending receipt of satisfactory background checks.
Thank you, is there support?
This is Money, I'd support.
Thank you, can we have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you.
Mayor Commission, I just, I, I think it's appropriate and renewal period to say thank you again, uh, to these companies for their continued investment in Buchanan, uh, for their tax base, for the jobs that they create and for their community partnership. All the principles of these companies are in this room and, uh, they visit City Hall often and, uh, can, uh, apprise us of their projects and, uh, we have great relationships with, with all three of them, so, um, I just want to thank in the spirit of renewal, thank you, I don't think we say it enough, thank you for choosing Buchanan and, uh, we appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you all, yeah.
And thank you. Okay, now we're going to hear from, uh, our Chamber Executive Director, Main Street Manager, Ashley Regal. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Regal, I'm the Chamber Executive Director and the Main Street Manager. I'm pleased to report on the progress we are making with the Michigan Main Street Program. Applications are now available online through our website and there's more information about the program if you're interested as well. Notifications have been made on Facebook, the website and hard copies are also available both in the city and the chamber. We'll be accepting applications until the end of the month. The chamber will then, the chamber board will then review the applications and make the recommendation to the commission and those who join can immediately begin training with, uh, the Michigan Main Street Program and there are formal cohort, cohort, cohort meetings that are beginning March twenty-fourth. Do you guys have any questions for me on Main, Main Street?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring to the community's attention that this is probably one of the most fascinating programs that is out there in Michigan right now because, uh, not only does it offer us an opportunity to get our name into Lansing's ears more often, uh, in the, in a good way than we currently do, uh, and that's a good thing, that's just that we, Rich has done a great job of getting our name out there, but I think this is a, really the next major step in the right direction. In addition to that, they're right next door to Niles and Niles is doing great things and Niles had, is, and if you guys read recently, they got rid of the node, right? That was, that was a difficult decision, I think there was pros and cons to both, I think they had good justification for getting rid of it, I think they had good justification for keeping it. Uh, but that being said, they also had Main Street in their buildings talking about what they were gonna do next if the node wasn't there. And that's a big deal because i- if we align, we've always aligned with Niles, I think we have a good relationship, we share a road, for heaven's sakes, so, uh, this, I, I've done the program, I've already completed the materials, it's not very difficult, I do encourage, uh, individuals who are interested in, in doing things that are important in Buchanan, this is gonna be one thing that's gonna make a significant difference. When twenty twenty-three project comes online and we start looking at the, the revitalization of our streets and what our streetscape looks like, it's gonna be a huge project that we want people from every facets of life, every, every demographic to make it what we want for the next forty, fifty years, so, thank you so much for, for completing that, I'm, if you couldn't tell, I'm super excited about this program. It, it's really, it brings to light what these other cities have done, I think, uh, Muskegon's one of them, I believe, and if you've been in time, if you take the time to get out of Muskegon, it takes a little bit of time, but I encourage it 'cause they have changed the landscape of Muskegon forever, so, uh, and that's just one, there's tons of them, but anyway, thank you so much for doing that.
Any other questions? Okay?
Okay, um, the next thing is something I'm seeking your, um, guidance on. The common is a wonderful asset to the Buchanan community, it has steadily increased in popularity and now we are at a point where we need a formal public policy to determine usage rights and order of priority. I suggest the order of priority be city affiliated, number- I suggest the order of priority be city affiliated. Number one, city affiliated, open to the public events. Number two, non-city affiliated, open to the public events. And three, private ticketed or special interest events. The main area of concern that I have is the last two categories and how to address policy regarding these groups. I would like to develop a policy that is transparent, predictable, and fair to both the interested parties and to the public. Additionally, I suggest pricing for the rentals reflects the use of city resources. With your permission, I would be happy to draft a pricing policy, but I seek further guidance on the issue of how to address rentals of the common and intentionally public space for private and special interest events.
I, I think if you could come up with a draft of, of what you're proposing, I mean, it would, it would help me personally just 'cause I like to be able to see things in front of me, so I can scribble on them and think about it, but, um, I think that would help, um, as a place to start. But I like what I hear so far.
Right, you're moving in the right direction, and, and like, uh, the mayor said, I think, I think we need, um, a little bit more, so we know which way to, you know, go with this, so, but it would help me out also. Thank you.
Yeah, I think some of the concern on the private event space piece would it just would get gobbled up, right, in terms of how, how many do we allow? That would be my concern. Um.
That's partially it. I do have, I don't wanna say knocking down my door, but I do have a lot of requests, and it's a balancing act because it is a public space.
Right, I don't think it's a birthday party venue to, that, that can be shut down for, but, you know, there are events such as like concerts and things like that that might be one, wanna be funded privately and open to the public that I would be open to. The private pieces, where I have a hard time shutting down entire quote-unquote park for a private event unless it's approved by the Commission, like the cannabis event we're discussing, um, or hadn't been discussing. I don't know where it stands, but that's where my, I do wanna see a more full proposal, but my gosh, that's where my head's at. That helps.
I think if you could put a draft together and we could, you know, we could just start passing it around amongst folks in City Hall and amongst ourselves, and some of us might have ideas or, you know, something that you haven't thought of, or.
I think one of the key ones that stands out to me, like if you're looking at key dates, key opportunities for these major, uh, acts or events to occur, we would want to have some sort of language that dictates in those particular timeframes, just because it's a substantial opportunity that we wouldn't wanna have to compete with, no offense, a birthday party, uh, I'm sorry, but a little kid's birthday party. They're wonderful. I have many of them, but they're just not gonna, they're not gonna be the one that draws the commons, you know, community, so. Yeah, so definitely a, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you use the concept of the common being our economic hub for what we want people to disperse from, to help you figure out what makes the most sense in terms of priority and what, what makes sense in that space, if it's gonna create economic movement within the city, it probably, uh, can fit in there in some capacity, but something to chew on.
Definitely in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate your guidance.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Appreciate it.
All right, let's move down to the Public Services Report. Uh, Mike Baker. Mr. Baker?
Good evening. Mike Baker, Public Services Director in Buchanan. Was on a water leak and I left all my paperwork in the office. So. We have proposals to tear down our building. Obviously, if we don't move on a proposal.
We're gonna miss our window.
Our C M wants to charge us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we can get done for significantly less.
Right.
So we have some, some pretty good quotes, as far as I'm concerned, on, on what we're looking at here.
Mm-hmm.
Our, we have R J, uh, company to tear down. Are, are we looking at all the properties to tear down?
Well, it's, it's up to the Commission, and I will share, we, I received an email earlier today, um, from someone at River Saint Joe Inquiring as to whether we would still consider holding off on the demolition of the old feed mill until they were able to finalize their potential plans involving trying to preserve a portion of that, um, structure.
They just wanted the metal, right?
Yes, they were seeking to take portions of the silos, um, for a, for a project.
I don't.
I mean, I think we can keep them in the discussions, but, um, I don't know that we can halt progress at this point.
Well, I don't, I don't, even if we move forward, I think then we just put them in contact with whoever we decide to choose, right, and then we'll make that connection, and then whatever transpires from there.
Can I make some, real quick, that it's the farm, it's Flatwater Farm, kind of, or is it children's?
Okay.
Yep.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't hear what he said. Who was that?
It's Flatwater Farms.
Flatwater Farms, okay, I'm sorry.
Not the restaurant itself.
So anyways, R J I R Construction, um, they have three quotes for us. Uh, to tear down just the feed mill buildings is sixty thousand dollars. Uh, to tear down the abandoned house in nine oh six Victory is eight thousand dollars, and then six oh six Clark Street, um, is forty thousand dollars. This is the company that said that they would come in and crush everything for us if that's what we wanted. They wouldn't recommend it, but they would entertain the idea. But they have to get all three of the projects to do it, so they could haul all the concrete to one place and.
But that's not what their quote says. Their quote says that they're going to leave it on site. They're gonna leave all the crushed.
Yes, but they're gonna crush it for us and leave it on site if that's what you guys want. Which our C M said.
Said they didn't want that.
They don't want it.
Right.
Do we want it for, sorry, other uses?
It's, so, as I have been explained time and time again by all these companies, it's not good enough material to reuse. Um, Oatsfall Construction said he could do it. He's out of glean. He said, but what are you gonna do with the material? Because it's not, the blocks turns into sandstone, and we don't have enough other materials to mix with it to make it a good enough material, which is exactly what the C M said in our meeting.
Yep.
Right.
So.
Okay.
If you wanna use them, that's, that's what they got. Um, this is, this one stopped out at R J Construction.
Sorry, while you're on that one, so Mike, so.
Yes, oh, you gotta go up.
If they, their quotes reflective of leaving it on site, was, what's the, was there additional conversation or charge, or they're taking it away, or that's just the only thing they're gonna do is crush it and leave it on site?
They never had a conversation with me because it was told to them that they wanted it crushed and left on site, so.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's where we're at with that one.
While you're standing there, can you tell us about the, uh, the boil order and the water leak that you were on?
Absolutely. So we had a twelve-inch water main that carries mill pond, uh, has, well, it runs from the senior center all the way through from the water tower. The two-inch line coming off, coming off of that, um, there's two two-inch lines coming off the twelve-inch main. One of the two-inch lines completely, there was shelling pieces of the, the two-inch copper line out of the hole. Um, the copper line went bad, apparently. Um, so that's their service, so we had to dig it down. In the process, we had to shut it off because it was dumping twelve inches of water through a two-inch line with a hole in it that big, and it was just blowing everywhere. So we had to shut everything completely off to be able to get to it, and that's where we're currently at.
Still working on it?
It's there. We were tightening everything up and hoping for no more water. That's where we were at when I left.
All right, thanks.
So, um, so then we have Payne's Excavating who quoted our D P W building and nine oh six Victory. The D P W building, their quote was, I believe, forty thousand.
Forty-four five.
Forty-four five. With their quote, they also said that while they were hauling our materials out, every load that they took out, they would backhaul sand. If we paid for the sand, they would backhaul it back to our site for, free of charge.
Plus the cost of the sand. We have to pay for the sand.
We have to pay for the sand, but their trucking is free.
Right.
So, that is an option.
Was there, was there a reason that they didn't quote the, uh, one oh nine railroad? I didn't see a quote from.
They are a two-man band, and they didn't, they didn't wanna get in, taking down the, the silos. I told them, don't worry about the silos. We could, you know, we could talk to a different company, or that's when we were talking about River Saint Joe or, or Flatwater Farms taking them down.
So they weren't comfortable with the size of, the scope of the railroad, okay.
Just the silo portion or the building?
The silo portion.
So they'll.
They would take down the buildings and everything else, but they didn't feel like they should put a quote in on any of it if they weren't gonna do the whole job.
Okay.
So, um, they, they said if you, if the Shepherds or whoever, Flatwater Farms takes down the, the bins, they'll have no problem coming in, taking out the footings, and they can do that, too. Um, they put in a quote on the Victory Street House for eight thousand dollars. Um, I was gonna see if I couldn't swindle them into bringing sand back from that job as well, if, since we have so much to haul. Um, Withrow Excavating put in three bids for us, uh, for Railroad Street. I don't know what the options exactly consist of, but it's sixty thousand dollars for the first option, thirty thousand dollars for the second option, and twenty thousand dollars for option three. I don't have the whole.
So sixty was to take down the, the main building. Thirty was to take down the silos along the railroad tracks, and the, and the twenty was to get rid of the foundations for the silos along their tracks.
So fifty thousand dollars combined to take all that down.
Correct, so a hundred and ten total.
So, there you go.
And they were, and on each one of their quotes, they were, um, they were bringing sand, uh, back to the site, and on the nine oh six Victory, they were going to bring back topsoil and grass seed. And they're gonna do the same at the Railroad Street site also.
I think everybody who quoted that quoted the same for bringing topsoil and sand back to fill in, but that's as far as they were gonna go with everything, if I can remember correctly from my.
Yeah, the only one, uh, that they said they weren't going to bring back, um. Who was, I, I, somebody said they weren't gonna bring anything back to, oh, I think it was, uh, Withrow Excavating said they weren't gonna bring anything back to the six oh six Clark Street, just because there was construction going on. They weren't gonna do topsoil and grass seed, which makes sense.
So. We had Pelley's. Pelley's, uh, gave us an estimate on our D P W building at sixty-eight, five ninety-three. Um, that was tearing the whole thing down and bringing back sand to fill in the footings. That's what he quoted me. Um, Withrow's Excavating was forty-five thousand to tear down the street department building. That's about all I really have, I believe.
And then we had the Oatsfall.
I don't see the Oatsfall one on here.
Estimates. Well, it doesn't really matter.
No, it doesn't matter if you saw it.
Um, one of these things don't belong. Uh, Oatsfall was, um, completely out of the ballpark.
I did see that he was two hundred thousand dollars to tear down the silos and get rid of that.
Yeah, well, it was two hundred thousand to tear down something, and then another seventy-five to tear down the rest. So he was actually two seventy-five.
Two hundred thousand dollars to tear down just the, the bins along the railroad tracks and take out the foundations.
Yeah, and then it was seventy-five to tear down the store.
And then seventy-five to tear down the buildings and, yeah, complete the project.
Mike, one of the contractors, I think it was R J on here, said he had a significant amount of certifications related to railroad-related work. Have we talked with Amtrak or anybody on what, uh, what we're required to have on site in terms of supervision for a project like that?
I have not, but I do know that that is an area where you will need certifications to work in that specific, uh, distance to the railroad tracks. Which is another reason why Payne's decided not to, to go do that part. Um, I'm assuming that the rest of them have those qualifications. Uh, Withrow seemed pretty confident in that he could do it. Um, but that R J, they're tearing down the buildings in Niles on Wayne Street that are all disassembled.
I think it was on fire or something, right?
So they're, they, they have their equipment here. That's why they, they're, they're out of Flint, so, and they're working with Elf Construction out of Elkert. So they were just in the area, and I called Elf Construction to see if they had a crusher to crush all the concrete. That's how R J got involved.
My, my only concern with R J would be what would be the additional cost if we told them we didn't want them to leave it on site?
I, that I don't know, and we'd have to call them and ask them.
I mean, I think everything else is, is fairly close.
Yeah, I think everyone else is, is fairly close. I know that the C M was interested in Payne's when we talked about it that night because they were gonna backhaul sand.
Right, yeah.
And in calculating, you know, my rough guesstimate on what they're gonna bring back is gonna far outweigh what we're not gonna get for that money, I guess. So.
Heather, is there a reason we didn't put this out for, like, public R F P?
Basically because there were so many different variables. We weren't sure that there was gonna be a group that would definitely bid on all of them. It would be probably too complicated to have a one-size-fit-all R F P that all of these groups could bid on, that because of the different options that they all have. We wouldn't be able to hear the different options of who could crush, who couldn't, who can keep, bring sand back, who can't. Because when you do an R F P, you have to do it super standardized.
Sure.
There can't be any variation.
Right.
We just wanted to have flexibility.
Well, that's kinda where I'm struggling with some of this. I'm hearing somebody can do this versus somebody can do this. They bid it one way versus the other guy bid it crushing it and maybe didn't even know, did they even know about the sand piece, R J?
Oh, they knew they had to fill, backfill the, the site. Um, Payne's approached me about backhauling sand for us.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think it's a phenomenal idea. I just have concerns like that railroad certification could turn that specific site into something different. I think Clark Street and Victory Street are pretty cut and dry for the most part.
Yeah, yep.
The railroad one I have a lot of concern with on that certification piece.
Yeah, and anytime a bid is approved at the Commission level, we don't go and just sign a contract until we finalize feasibility and things like the permitting are part of that feasibility.
So what we're up against now is frost laws going on. So if, if we sign with someone and frost laws go on, they cannot haul as much, so it's gonna take twice as much to get out and twice as much to get back. So.
That's if we sign now or not, though, right? If, if we sign a contract and frost laws go on next week, we're still gonna be imposed those fees?
Well, you can put, you can put on that you, frost laws should only be on for a month, month and a half or so, maybe two months at the longest. Um, so you're pushing it out that far, but we aren't gonna get a building for forty weeks until we order it, so.
Right.
You know.
Do you have anybody, do you have a recommendation, or no?
If you're gonna give the whole thing to one group, I'd say the R J group, but you gotta decide what you're gonna do with the materials.
Well, if our C M is saying they don't want the materials on site, then I'm, I'm, I'm already favoring our C M. They're the ones that are gonna be building there.
Too many unknowns with the Railroad Street properties, if you want my opinion at this point. So I would go with Payne's, 'cause they're gonna backhaul my sand.
They're gonna bring back all the sand.
That.
Well, so is, so is Withrow, Withrow, though.
He's only gonna bring enough to fill in your, and he's gonna charge you to haul it back.
Yeah. Can we, I mean, I personally would like us to move on, and I'm happy to make a motion, but not moving on the railroad as much as I wanna see it gone.
Yes.
I just have a lot of concerns on the rest of it, and our other bids aren't contingent upon getting railroad, correct?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a whole different ballgame.
I want railroad gone, but I'm just.
There's a lot of variables we need to get ironed out before. I, I know that the R J was like, yeah, we can do that, no problem. I have the certification.
But I'm, I'm gonna go back to the Withrow thing, though. You're telling me, but they quoted bringing sand back, and they gave us a quoted price, so I, I don't understand.
But they're gonna bring back enough sand to fill in what they take out. They're not gonna, Payne's are gonna fill in what they take out and haul back more every time they take a load, 'cause what you're gonna fill in with
To the D P W.
is not going to, to, uh, equal what they're taking out, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it says no sand included to replace slab volume as we are unaware of the new building elevation.
They're gonna, they're gonna fill the hole with that and bring back it, basically what it wants to.
That's Withrow.
On the forty-five thousand. That, yeah, that's Clark Street, yeah.
My recommendation would be Payne's Excavating to tear down rare, uh, six oh six Clark.
Victory and Clark.
And the Victory Street House.
Only hold on railroad prayer till we can get some clarification on certifications.
Yep.
And true cost. Maybe we can get Flatwater involved a little earlier, so they know we wanna move.
Flatwater still wants to be involved, so you're not really wasting any time there.
But we wanna move quickly still.
We wanna move on the six oh six Clark Street one, and I would say the Victory Street one, as fast as we can, in my opinion. Also with Payne's tearing out all that stuff at Victory Street, they're gonna tear out all the stumps and let it haul the ground and put grass seed back in.
And do grass seed.
I do like the grass seed deal.
Um.
Yeah. Yeah. Do we wanna go formal RFP on the railroad, Heather?
I was about to.
And then we can.
We, we could, um, I will say drafting a formal RFP for something like a demolition, you usually have to hire an expert like we did, um, for the construction side, because I'm not myself an expert in demolitions. So to create an RFP that adequately covers everything, you need someone who knows that field, that's part, part of the reason why we didn't do that as well.
Somewhere along the lines, I remember someone asking about leaving the silos because they thought that they gave that property, um, an industrial feel or like a historic feel, um.
They're gonna fall down if we don't take it with them.
Amtrak's been on us for two years.
Yeah, oh, I know.
One of them already came down and then we had to pay to have the other part ripped out.
I get it, yeah, um. I'm, I don't like, I mean, personally, I don't like the idea of, of, of still not doing anything with the railroad street, I mean, I get, I get the needing to make sure that we
It's my least fair property.
Have, uh, all our certifications.
You could tear down the buildings and level the ground and not tear down the silos at this point, if that's where you wanted to go with it, they all have bids on tearing them except for Payne's on tearing it that part down.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could continue the conversation with Payne's about what they would feel comfortable doing at the railroad street property.
I think they didn't wanna give you a half, halfway bid and not bid the silos because they didn't wanna get into that part of it.
Right.
Because of the railroad easements and stuff, but I, I believe that we could probably talk to them and say, what do you got for us to tear down these buildings and?
Depending where we're coming from.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's something that we could talk about in the future, and when I say in the future, not so distant future, but we could make the recommendation to start, uh, or approve Payne's to uh, look at the Victory Street and the Clark Street property and go ahead with that particular bid, and then refer back to them maybe like I said, in the near, in the near future to, to, uh, get rid of that railroad property, if, if they are able to tackle that kind of a job. About the silos, yeah, they're probably gonna be a different subject, you know?
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna see.
They could take those out there.
AVB, come in here and say.
Big shelters out there, that'd be great.
We're tearing this down for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we've got boats on the table for forty thousand.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm. Yeah, no, I'm with you, and I, and I don't wanna hold up anything at Clark Street, so, um, I guess that being said, would someone like to make a motion?
So I'll, I'll support, I'm gonna need dollar amounts in front of me again. I'll support proceeding with hiring Payne's, Payne Services, is that what their name is?
There you go.
Thank you, Payne's Excavating for the price of eight thousand dollars for nine oh six Victory, and Payne's Excavating for a price of forty-four thousand and the sand for Clark Street, and I'd like to see, I'm sorry, forty-four, five.
Yeah. Plus the cost of hanging.
And hopefully by the next meeting, we can have a better idea on the railroad.
Right.
Is there support?
Maybe we can have conversations with the guy that we're buying sand from too and say, hey, this is what we're gonna need, and that's a conversation on the road.
We had the motion to support, right?
Excuse me.
I'll support that motion.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Mike, for that.
Thanks, Mike.
Report, um.
Put on a happy face.
Streets look good. Uh, this, uh, I'd asked, uh, our treasurer for the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Members of the Public, Stephanie Powers, City Treasurer. This is the meeting of the month when you would have received my treasurer's report, which is the, uh, checking account balances, the cash management fund, and, uh, the fund balances for Honor Credit Union, Huntington Bank. I also included interest earned at both of those banks, and you did receive a quarterly investment reconciliation of the investment account. This time, approved expenditures were a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Of those approved expenditures, fifty-seven thousand, ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents came from the general fund. Of that amount, seventeen thousand dollars was our payment to Krugel Lawton for the city's audit. I do wanna mention at this time that Krugel Lawton is planning on sending the final draft of the city's audit to the state tomorrow, and they are also planning on giving a final draft presentation to the commission on the February twenty-eighth. Our meeting on February twenty-eighth, so things are going well, I'm gonna say that with a little tentativeness, but I think it's gonna turn out well. Ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents came from the major, uh, streets fund. One thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents from local streets. Twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-eight cents came from water and sewer, sewer maintenance operations. One thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents was trust and agency, and we had summer and winter tax dispersments this time of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Any questions?
Questions?
I'll just quickly add the draft, uh, first draft of the audit summary that I saw today actually had very favorable news that we had an increase of five point one six percent in that position compared to previous year, which is fantastic, the majority of which is attributable to increases in grant revenue, so what, the request for us to look for more grants is paying off.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Grant writer, do we have that grant writer on staff, did that ever go anywhere?
Yes, correct, he, he's working for us as an independent contractor.
I did also want to mention that our new bookkeeper is working on a report to show where our to- city tax dollars are going. She just needs a little bit more time, so we're hoping that at the next meeting in February, we will have that information to present to you also.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Um, okay, let's move on to the clerk report.
So I wanted to come before you guys because it's election season, and I need to give you guys some updates. Um, honestly, I thought twenty twenty was probably gonna be one of my hardest election years to get through, and this one's shaping up to be just as good. So, um, wanted to talk to you about, you've probably seen the confirmation notices that my activity reports. Um, what those were from were from the twenty twenty election when, uh, Secretary of State Benson sent every registered voter in Michigan an application for absentee during the pandemic. What happens is post office sends those back, and we ended up getting, um, four hundred and thirty-two of those back. So what I have to do is literally look up every single one of those voters, look at their history, see if they've moved, see if they're deceased, see where they went, if they're still here. Um, and if I don't have any history on them, I have to send them a confirmation notice. So out of the four hundred and thirty-two, two hundred and eighteen, we're all sent out, which is great, um, if I don't hear from back from them, they go into a cancellation countdown, which cleans up our voter rolls after a certain amount of time, so that's one good thing, it's done, it's over with, so. Um, a couple of the other things was the redistricting maps, um, if you guys, I put in your packet, it was a little hard to see. The redistricting commission met, um, they finalized everything at the end of the year. If you noticed from the before and after, um, it's different, the numbers are different, the areas are completely different, which that ties in right now for our voter ID cards, because the numbers are different on your voter ID cards. Legally, we have to send new voter ID cards to every registered voter in the city of Buchanan. So right now, we have three thousand, five hundred and eighty-three registered voters. That means at least just in postage alone, it's gonna cost over a thousand dollars. And that's not talking about time, printing cost, um, I've looked into a couple of different places. Somewhat decent quotes, but I feel like I could probably do it faster myself, that's my concern, is because there is legal pending suits against the commission about the redistricting maps, we don't know what's gonna happen. We might, in August, we might have the same numbers that we had last year, or we might have this one. The Bureau of Elections is kinda telling us to hold off as long as possible, so if we hire a printing company to do them, they're already gonna be backed up. I would rather have that control myself and just do it. So with that, the election right now, we have the primaries in August and, uh, the general in November. So the notice went out for petitions for city commissioner, so they are ready, if anybody wants to pick them up, so, any questions?
Question, no?
No, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, moving on to item F, board appointments?
So the, we're asking the commission to consider appointments to One Buchanan Board for Meg Paulette, Monroe LeMay, and Sonia Rodriguez, each of whom was recommended for approval by the One Buchanan Board during their January meeting.
Excellent, anybody like to make a motion?
And they're all willing, right?
Yes, as far as we know, they haven't changed their minds, yeah.
This is money I would move to appoint, uh, Meg Paulette, Monroe LeMay, and Sonia Rodriguez to the One, One Buchanan Board as recommended by the One Buchanan Board during their last meeting.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Caris.
All right, thank you, moving down to unfinished business, uh, we don't have any, so we're gonna move to new business. Uh, consider the purchase request from, um, Dave Cape Brown for his Buchanan Police Department issued firearm as well as his, uh, leather belt. Anybody wanna speak to that? Thank you, chief.
So as we know, Officer Cape Brown retired after twenty-six years of service, uh, with the city. He gave a written request to purchase his, uh, department-owned firearm, um, his leather, his gun belt. We have done this in the past, um, officers who have left, uh, on good standings like Officer Cape Brown did. The commission has approved that, uh, purchase along with that equipment. That would help him come back as a part-timer for us, uh, cause he is sticking around with us as a part-timer.
Oh, good.
Excellent, thank you. I know when it, when it was brought to us, uh, the idea was to maybe put it on the consent agenda, cause I think we're all in agreeance that we wanna do that, but I had asked to put it on here just to make sure we could say his name a few more times because, um, I think he deserves the recognition, so.
Oh, he does, I mean, that's, uh, for anyone that knows Dave Cape Brown and the years that he served with our city and, and the job that he did for those twenty-six years, uh, just an outstanding officer, an outstanding person, so we're fortunate to have him, hopefully we'll be able to see him once in a while. And just for you to know, um, we've already got his position filled, so, you know, there is good news with him leaving, so. Uh, we were able to, uh, retain one of our, uh, part-timers, so he's gonna come and work full-time for us. So he's already got, uh, six plus years of experience with another police department, he's worked with us for a year and a half, so he's gonna be an easy plug-in.
Right.
Just throwing that out there for information.
Great, good job. All right, appreciate it, anybody like to make a motion?
This is money I would move to approve the purchase request from Dave Cape Brown regarding his issued firearm and duty leather belt.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Absolutely.
Caris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, chief. Uh, okay, item B on our new business, consider resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Roland Property Group, one oh one, one oh three Days Avenue, Buchanan, Michigan. Anybody like to make a motion? And then we can have any discussion that you wanna have.
Sean, I'll move to approve the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Roland Property Group, one oh one to one oh three Days Avenue, Buchanan, Michigan.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Does anybody have any comments or?
It's gonna be great to see it.
I think, uh, yeah, I think we're really lucky to have, um, some young, um, ambitious, uh, entrepreneurs in town. And I think whatever we can do to help them, uh, we should do, so, can we roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
I'm staying, there's no interest.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item C, new business, consider, uh, the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Claremont Stark LLC, five oh two Claremont Street, Buchanan, Michigan. Anybody like to make a motion on that?
I move to approve the resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation, rehabilitation district for Claremont Street LLC, five oh two Claremont, Buchanan, Michigan, four nine one oh seven.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, uh, just wanted to set up next steps, so now that the upward district has been created for each property, um, each property owner will complete a, uh, application, and, uh, we will then come back to you, uh, for approval of that application. So, I, I'll be, uh, in touch with you and the property owners, um, with a more specific timeline of when you expect that to be, so. But, um, these are exciting projects and, um, really, it's really good for Buchanan to see, uh, the support, uh, from the commission on these, uh, two economic tools, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Uh, okay, under new business, item D, consider appointments to the Municipal Building Authority.
So the Municipal Building Authority was formed last November by the Buchanan City Commission for the purpose of creating an entity that can go out for bond to help finance projects such as the new DPW construction. Um, any bonds issued by that authority can only be used as the name implies for municipal buildings. Uh, Bond Counsel Roger Swetts, who is the, who's leading the city's Municipal Building Authority Bond Project, is recommending that the city commission make the following appointments to this newly created Municipal Building Authority. Appoint four members from internal city staff, including one, City Manager Heather Grace, two, Community Development Director Rich Murphy, three, City Clerk Calla Langston, and four, City Treasurer Stephanie Powers. Roger Swetts shared that he recommends utilizing internal staff because it's the board that reviews the bond applications and it's very technical and honestly quite boring, but he wanted to make sure that, um, you guys knew that was why he was making those recommendations.
All right, thank you, anybody like to make a motion?
This is money I would move to appoint Heather Grace, Rich Murphy, Calla Langstrom, and Stephanie Powers to the Buchanan Municipal Building Authority.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. Uh, under new business, item E, city credit card changes.
So at this time, the city finance department is recommending the following credit card changes to the city-issued credit cards. First, close the city credit card issued to Marcia, Marcia Johnson, our previous bookkeeper. Second, approve a city credit card for our new bookkeeper Courtney Baham with a two thousand limit, which was the same level for the previous bookkeeper. And third, approve a city credit card for Clay Weaver, our Saxon, with also a two thousand dollar credit limit.
Are there any questions?
Does, does Clay require a credit card being out there, uh, this question for?
They use mine, it's, it's.
Okay.
He asked me about it, he said, where's this come from, I said, I have no idea, didn't know anything about it, so.
It's because best practice is to use the card with your name on it, is all it boils down to, because they're using a card.
Is it just for convenience rather than having to track you down to find a credit card for him to go use or? I'm assuming.
Sure.
It's so the signatures match, because it's technically not great practice.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
I mean, how, how many vendors do we need credit, I mean, cause we got, like, eight or so floating around now?
Yeah, approximately.
We don't have like purchase order agreements with like Lowe's or?
We do with some of the entities, but not with all of them.
Okay.
I think, if I recall correctly, when we discussed this last time, and that ultimately it still falls on your responsibility to approve.
Right.
That payment.
Yeah, and, and all. Correct. Yeah, and, and all expenditures all ultimately go through the commission for approval as well, so.
Okay.
My, my question, like I said, my question was just, you know, with Clay, did he absolutely need to have it? And, and running back and forth to try to find Mike, you know, I mean, he's probably sleeping on the back wall right now, but I mean, you know.
Rather than wake him up after he's spent twenty-one hours, the deal is
So he can back up there and go to work.
Yeah, exactly.
Quit resting and get back up there to work.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
This is money I would move to approve. I would move to approve the credit card expenditures that we have for Courtney, Marcia Johnson, and Clay Weaver.
So just to clarify, I think you're saying, close the city credit card for Marcia Johnson and open two new ones, one for Courtney and Clay, each at $2,000.
Open two new ones for Courtney and Clay Weaver. Yes, ma'am.
Alright. Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Cares.
Thank you. Moving down to item F, misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy.
So this is an issue that we've discussed previously in closed session, and now would be the opportunity to discuss it publicly if the commission is favorable, whether they want to proceed with this as a policy, not an ordinance, but an internal policy.
Wanna share some background on the purpose of it?
Yeah, so the purpose of it is we're looking to make sure that we're being a model employer and also a model representative for our community, that we're taking a stand against any type of discrimination and harassment in the community at large. But this would apply to staff and members of boards and commissions, to make sure that we're all upholding the high standards that we should be.
We hear often that we are opaque, not transparent, unethical, crooked, dirty. The list goes on and on and on. So this was our way of making sure that we were doing things in an ethical way and that we were showing the community that, you know, we have to lead by example, so we thought it should start here. So, would anybody like to make a motion?
Sean will make the motion to approve the misconduct, harassment, and discrimination policy as presented in the formal city policy.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money I'd support that.
Can we roll call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Cares.
Thank you. Okay, item G, removal of Dan Viancy from the city boards. I don't wanna make a, you know, I don't wanna make a lot out of this, but I did, I do have just some comments I'd like to make, if that's okay. First of all, importantly, I think it's important to remember that our children are watching us. They see how we interact with one another, and we have a responsibility of showing them that it's okay to ask tough questions. It's okay to stand up for one's convictions, and it's honorable to serve one's community. But we also have the responsibility of showing them that all those things can be done with integrity, character, and ethics. If we don't teach them, excuse me, how to be respectful, who will? Secondly, we as a community have trouble trying to fill board vacancies and get participants to show up for meetings without having drama or making them feel intimidated and anxious about attending a meeting. We cannot afford to have people sitting on boards that are making others not want to participate. We need community voices who are willing to collaborate and compromise, who will make the community better and realize that the only way to do that is by working together in an atmosphere that promotes healthy, respectful dialogue. Even, excuse me, even on the toughest subject matters, we as a commission must lead by example. Finally, we recently adopted an ethics policy in an effort to promote integrity, civility, and transparency. We cannot allow someone to represent the city in any way that has knowingly and repeatedly acted in a way that violates those policies. Acting in an aggressive manner, raising your voice, making misogynistic statements, and being downright rude to members of the public that attend a meeting is in no way representative of this community or what it stands for. It's for those reasons, and those reasons alone, that I would ask the commission to consider the removal of Mr. Viancy from the Buchanan Area Recreation Board and his own Board of Appeals effective immediately. Is there any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I, I would make a comment. My name was put on this. I was in attendance, in attendance when Mr. Viancy went off on this, on our mayor, and basically what this commission did. And there were people in the audience that made statements that they would not mind being on the bar board, but there would have to be changes made to that board, and one of those significant changes was Mr. Viancy. And so, the name-calling and stuff that transpired during that meeting were very, I say, upsetting to me, you know? I mean, we've all called names, but you've elected this commission, and for our mayor to be chastised in that manner was really insulting to me as a, the commissioner sitting there, as it was to the board that was being represented here. So, this is money, and I would recommend to remove Mr. Viancy from all city boards, including the Buchanan Area Recreational Board.
Thank you. Is there support?
You motioned he supported.
I motioned.
He motioned.
Oh, I thought you
No, I was just saying that the reasons why I would like to see a motion.
How's that make my comments after the motion, second motion?
Do you wanna support?
I support.
Is there further discussion?
Yes. So I have, some of the verbiage I read in there made it seem as if Mr. Dan would be indefinitely barred. Is that?
That's not what's, um
That's not the case.
Yeah, this is just a removal at this time.
So Dan?
Whether a permanent bar is something that could be discussed at a future point, if that's what's requested. My understanding was request for a removal at this time.
Okay. Cuz I didn't support a indefinite bar. I think Dan has the right to apply at any time in the future at the commission, any commission, whether this or another one's discretion to be added back.
That's my understanding, yes, is that he would be, if, if this motion's approved, immediately removed. However, he could apply for future positions, which would be reviewed by the city commission to decide.
Okay. I've shared with Dan my personal opinions on why he's being removed. The impact on our volunteer base is incredibly important. While I hope Dan can contribute in the future, he's been helpful to me on many side conversations on what he can do. I just don't think that's in the capacity of a board member anymore. So, thank you for what he has done, but unfortunately, I recommend he be removed as well.
Any other comments, discussion?
I, a lot of my comments mirror the other comments that we've already made. I think that, you know, we talk a lot about in recent months and over the last couple of years that Sean and I have been on the commission, as well as Cameron. You know, we, we look at things far differently than maybe other commissions do. I think that we've been far more transparent than other commissions have. I think that we are available in the community and that we are setting the precedence, not only by establishing a misconduct and harassment and discrimination policy, but that, you know, we're upholding the responsibility of the city to do the right thing and that, as much as we appreciate Dan's desire to do what's right for Buchanan, unfortunately, the way that he conducts himself on our boards at this time, in this particular situation, in this situation only, that we have to, we have to act in the manner that is becoming of where we see the city going. And if we continue to allow that, and we've seen in the past that it has been allowed and it's been gotten out of control, that that's not tolerated with this commission and this commission going forward, in whatever capacity it looks like, that we say to all commissions that this is not something that we accept, so.
Any other comments? Can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Cares.
Alright, thank you. Moving down to communications, the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference.
So, March fifteenth through sixteenth in Lansing, there will be a Capitol Conference sponsored by the Michigan Municipal League, the general purpose of which is to allow interactions between locally-elected municipal officials or administrative staff of local municipalities and governing units such as cities and townships and villages to interact and discuss matters of public policy with their elected representatives in the state legislature. So your state senators and your state representatives. They also have legal updates at these conferences. I'm planning on attending. I will be sure to forward any information that I hear. Any city commissioners who would like to attend with me, I would encourage you to let me know. We'll get you signed up and make sure that we have travel and all that lined up for you. Additionally, though, we're looking for input both from the commission and the public at large as to any matters of public policy that you feel should be discussed during that Capitol Conference. So I welcome anyone to email me directly. My email is on the city website, it's very easy. Hgrace@cityofbucanan.com. You can call city hall and share your comments. But again, any state-level issue that you want discussed with your local representative, and also, we would encourage you to contact them directly as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time I'd like to open it up for public comment, a non-agenda, excuse me, non-agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the, for the minutes, please.
Dale Turney, 801 Ottawa Court. Good evening, commission and fellow citizens. A few months ago, I was here to compliment the city workers, but unfortunately, the meeting went too long. So I'm coming back here tonight to thank Heather and Mike. I, there was a couple of large trees that fell in the Ottawa Ridge easement, which was on city property. However, there was another couple of large trees that was ready to go on neighbors. And if that was the case, then the city would have had some problems. Mike was out there, after I called Heather, Mike and his crew were out there in a half hour. And an hour later, everything was done. Everything was done safely. So I just wanted to come out and thank the city and the city employees for a job well done.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Anyone else wishing to make a?
Hi, it's me again, Monroe. 118 Turner Parkway. I have two things to actually mention. First of all, Heather, your staff is amazing. It's my first time being here since Zoom meetings, and I'm really impressed. Secondly, I'm here on behalf of my sister, Daria LeMay. Daria actually went to school here and graduated. She recently moved to Buchanan. She's not here today because my mom cannot be left alone, so she's with her while I'm here. She bakes, and she is an incredible hat designer, and she's extremely talented. And we tried to start a business here in Buchanan, but we just don't have the money for it. So she is now selling at different, at the farmer's market. So for Valentine's Day, she has brought you guys some of her stuff for you guys to try. She does take private orders. She has actually moved to her own apartment downtown on Days Avenue. And I just wanted to, for her sake, let you know that she's in town. She's really happy to be part of Buchanan. She's decided to move here from New York City. So, enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Monroe. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Sis Davis, 312 Short Street. I've owned my house for a couple of years. This is not gonna seem like a big problem to you guys, but it's a big problem to me. Cats, cats, and more cats. There's at least fifty Pharaoh cats, and I live a block and a half from here. I'm trying to feed these guys. It's taking me fifty dollars a week. They're killing each other. They're tearing each other's ears off. They're, they're God's creatures. No different than the ducks we take care of in this town. We need to do something about the cat problem. I don't know how to go about it. I don't know if I need a petition. I don't know. I work at Hilltop, so I can get lots of signatures, and I got a really big mouth.
That's a great start.
She, she does well at that point.
Yes.
Good to know.
Suggestions, help? I don't, I tried to build cat houses. I'm not a builder.
That's my first time hearing about.
I'd rather talk to, I'd rather talk to John. I tried. I called Animal Control. They don't pick up cats. And I tried all the places that I could, some, get somebody come get them, and they could hold them there full. Because of COVID, nobody's adopting these cats. There's no place to put these cats. They're Pharaoh cats. It's so bad. I bet. It's so bad. So there was a post office lady, Linda, that lived in Buchanan. She lived on the corner of Red Blood and Fourth Street. She fed forty or fifty cats. She moved.
I wouldn't.
And the guy that owns the property blocked off the garage, so these cats can't get in there. They're freezing. They're starving. They're missing eyes and feet, and I can't do it. It's horrible.
Well, well, maybe the chief will have better luck with, with animal control, so.
Maybe.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. I, I didn't realize that we had a cat problem.
I thought they all lived at Ralph's house.
They're a block and a half. I was gonna bring a horn.
Should've put this down there where the rats were.
Good to know. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Do we have any, any written comments?
No.
No? Okay. Alright, seeing none, let's move on to executive comments. City manager.
I'll keep it really brief and short and sweet. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. I wanna say that there were a lot of great projects that were discussed at tonight's meeting. I'm super excited to see what they're gonna become. I know they're gonna be amazing. The group of people who are contributing towards our community right now are just very energized, and I think everyone's rowing in the same direction. We're seeing great things happen for Buchanan because of you guys supporting what we're trying to do and us supporting you and everyone working together. So I appreciate that and all of you, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alright. Starting this sentence.
You threw him off.
I did.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead. Happy Valentine's to everybody here. I wanna thank Heather and the city staff for everything that they do. They bring, bring all of this to the plate and to the table, and they just do an outstanding job. I also wanna say thank you to this commission, cuz I always like to acknowledge them every time I'm here because, my opinion, you know, we've, we've moved a long ways. And so, I thank each and every one of the gentlemen that are here, Mr. and Mrs. Roland. Congratulations on starting up, I didn't know your wife's name, Mike, so I could, I just said, Mr. and Mrs. Roland. And I apologize, but, you know, thank you for bringing, you know, to Buchanan, you know, just exactly what we need, as well as Jen Tabor. I think that Start School project is gonna be a great project. It's too bad that Electra Voice isn't still in a little bit of business, and you could recruit some of this material that they even had up there, you know, their sound rooms and stuff like that. But I imagine that's all gone to heck. Congratulations to my good friend, Chief Adams, for his outstanding thirty years of service to the citizens and to the city of Buchanan. Not everybody knows what a, what a fireman has to go through. They miss Christmases, Thanksgivings, birthday parties, you know? If the, if the buzzer blows, they're on their way out. So, thank you for putting yourself in harm's way for the citizens of Buchanan and congratulations on thirty years. And with that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swab?
I wanted to start by offering my condolences to the family of Clyde Weaver, longtime major contributor to this city in a variety of ways, from his service to serving, I think he was interim city manager for a short period, but touched my life a lot and many, many, many others in this community, so. Great man will be missed there. Next, Chief Adams. It's often a thankless honor for thirty years, so thank you. It's appreciated. Railroad Street, I want it gone, I know. I can't believe I, we pushed it off, but I think we made a right choice tonight. Hopefully, we'll hear very, very soon. And then, thank you for taking the risk on the city, to the Roland family and to the Tabor family. Hopefully, your projects spark the next level of investment, and we, we get what we're actually hoping for out of these abatements, and that's catalytic change. And it starts with somebody taking a risk, and that's what you three signed up for, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Awesome. Great segue. We didn't even plan it.
I know.
So I appreciate that. Rich Murphy, thank you once again for all of your hard work. I know a lot of it is, like I've said before, it's the duck on top of the water. We know that you're doing a lot of paddling that we don't see. And that's, and the testament to that is that these programs that are bringing these opportunities to our tables, they didn't exist until you're here. I know that's always been a
exist until you're here. I know that's always been a, a difficult conversation when they first said, "Well, what's an economic developer gonna do, a director going to do?" Uh, and, and there's just on and on and on and on and on, and all these programs and individuals you brought on and, and the businesses that are even entertaining the idea of coming to Buchanan. Uh, Monroe, for, for your sister to move here, tell her welcome from the commission and that's another testament to, uh, her desire to, to appreciate Buchanan and show why we're the nicest place in America, uh, two years ago, which is really strange to think it was that long ago. But, thank you once again for bringing all those programs. Uh, there was always a lot of naysayers when we first started approving these things and what are they gonna do? How are they gonna benefit us? What are, you know, what is it gonna look like in Buchanan? And, uh, when you drive through town and you see opportunities, uh, presenting themselves seemingly overnight sometimes, uh, it's a vibrant downtown. Again, there's businesses that are full. Uh, you know, you can't miss Canavista as you drive down Main Street right in front of your face. The lighting is fantastic. So, please, once again, please go to the sweet shop. I have, I, I gained nothing from this but others and just, I, I think it's the most amazing rebuild of what we all loved, if you've been in this town for any length of time. So, please take an opportunity to go there. Um, congratulations once again to, to the Rowlands, uh, to Jen Taber for, for what we know is coming. It's gonna be awesome and I know there's gonna be many more to follow. So, Mike, uh, thank you. Thirty years, man, that's, it's not easy and, uh, I know that we're all very proud to have you on the team and, and fighting the good fight, even if you have to put up with Larry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I too wanna, um, um, congratulate Chief Adams on thirty years. I think Larry was still probably in his sixties when you started, right?
Oh, my God.
I mean, he's been around a while, but, um... We have a lot of fun. We have a lot of fun with commis- with Commissioner Money. I just wanna, and we mean it in, in the nicest possible way.
But you're pretty close.
But, I'm, 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 but thirty years is a long time. It's something you should be very proud of. I, we're very proud of you, so, thank you. Um, I also, I wanted to thank the Rowlands and Jen Taber and, um, you know, I, I wasn't kidding earlier when I, I said, "We're really lucky to have you, uh, in our community doing the things you're doing." Um, and it's a scary thing. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm scared for you. But I'm, I'm right behind you to support you too. So, if there's anything else this commission can do, I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to help you. So, thank you very much for what you're taking on. Um, I too wanted to send my condolences to the Weaver family. Um, cl- um, Mr. Weaver was a, um, a World War II veteran. He was a Korean veteran.
Korean veteran, yeah.
The first person from Buchanan, I believe, to be called to the Korean War.
Yep.
Um, he started working at the Water Department in nineteen forty-six. He was a member of Buchanan Police from nineteen fifty to nineteen eighty-eight, retired as chief, and also served as interim, uh, city manager. So, quite, quite a story. Um... Darn. Oh, I was gonna mention, um, and I, I meant to mention this when I was talking about, um, the Rowlands and the Tabers, but, um, we, or when was that? This week? This past week, we went on a tour of Edgewater Automation, um, on Third Street.
Yeah.
Um, they were having, um, a small event. Uh, they were appointing some apprentices that they were, um, helping and, um, I was amazed at what is inside that building on Third Street. It's unbelievable. Um, and it kinda solidified in my mind that we are a town of makers. Um, they have a machine in that building that is, takes up a hundred thousand square feet. That's its footprint. And it's, um, in excess of forty million dollars. And it's unbelievable when you walk in, the size of the thing. And, and no one even knows it's there.
Right.
I mean, it's just unbelievable, the things that are going on in that building. And Jen's in that building. And the guy who went on the tour was like, "She does some cool stuff." Do you realize what she does? Like, he, I think, I think he wanted to sneak us back to look at your stuff too, but we didn't make it that far. But, um, it, you know, seeing stuff like that really makes you proud to be a part of this community, so, um, we all deserve, uh, a round of applause for the things that are happening. I wanna thank the city. Um, Mike, you guys are doing a great job with the streets and the snow. You did great with the leaves. I've heard nothing but great things about the leaves. That's cause they were gone before the snow came. Um, now the, now the snow is here though and you're doing a great job on that, so we appreciate it. Um, Heather, Rich, your entire staff, you guys are, are killing it. Keep up the good work. Um, and thank you to the commission for everything you do. I know there's a lot of, a lot of reading, a lot of time involved and, uh, it's appreciated. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
No support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Muddy?
Yes.
Swet?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Your adjourn?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah?
What do you wanna picture for?
For my march for a man's resolution.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing?
I bet we can twist Alex's arm.
Yeah.
Take picture?
Well, yeah, they did.
Yeah.
Uh, well, that, that'll come because we didn't have time to give any kind of recognition yet.
They just, they're, they're gonna do it. Yeah.
Yeah, and...
That went a lot better.
Yeah, and I actually, I forgot. I forgot.